Four or five seasons ago, four or five years ago, we continue to do it. The board supervisors made it a kindness zone. A couple of weeks ago, I was there. I was honored by them. I'm honored by you guys. Hope to be back next year. Hope that somebody reads what this says and, you know, they actually do it. And I'll be down at the Tulare Farm Show with my company, AgriTech, next week, and I'll be sharing the kindness acts of wristbands and so forth. So anyhow, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
I appreciate it. Yeah, thanks for supporting it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for staying with us there. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Look at that. You're wearing your wristband. That's good. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. We're going to change the world, aren't we?
We have.
Is indeed we changed? Oh, yeah. Hello, hello. Nice to see you. Proud of your daughter. Look at her up there. Look at this one over here. Yeah. Nice to see you, Jim. Wow, great. Yeah, it's been a while, yeah. All right, guys. Well, I got to head home. I've been on the road all day. Something green down the road. Thank you so much. Thank you, Jim. I'm glad you were here. Yeah, thank you for doing it. Yeah, thank you very much.
Item six is report out of closed session. No action was taken. Direction was given to our city manager. Moving on to item seven, approval of the agenda as posted. Any corrections, Steve?
None.
Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
A second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Rose?
Beehill?
Aye.
Charado?
Aye.
Chemente?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Brolio?
Aye.
Thank you.
I want to back up. I forgot to ask the citizens who are here or online if there were any comments about our agenda.
Well, I'm way behind them on all this right now. What exactly is the agenda here tonight?
Yes, there's some copies back there.
Okay, I have that. But does this have to do with our water rate?
Yes, and that's coming up.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay, not yet. You let me know.
We will.
Not yet. They will.
All right, so now we're moving on to public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person. So what we're going to ask for public comment, for someone to step up to the podium, state your name, and please, if you have public comment, it's on items that are not on the agenda. And the rate study is on the agenda for tonight. So if anybody else wants to make a public comment, please feel free to do so.
No.
Will these people turn on the mic?
She will.
I can handle it. I will if somebody gets up later.
Trish?
No, not right now.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Is there, Rose, anyone online?
There's a lot online. Nothing right now.
No public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. There are no items for the consent agenda this?
No.
Okay. So we're moving on to item 10, regular agenda. Approve resolution number 2507, a resolution of the City of Angels City Council regarding the public hearing for water and wastewater service fees. Steve Williams, interim city manager, administrator. We're going to move towards to the public hearing. We're going to conduct a public hearing for... What do we?
We're on the percent.
So just A.
Does it?
A.
Put the staff report on A. Ready for that one?
Yeah, 10A, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Question's A.
Right. And then we're moving to B, the public?
After that one.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Before you tonight, item A is a request to consider three different options related to the water rate issue. It is on the agenda as your second item of under the regular agenda. So we held... So let me back up. This process of the water rate update has been ongoing since about December of 2023. We have our water rate consultant, Rose, is Michael still online?
Yes.
We have our water rate consultant, Michael de Groot, from Barto Wells online if you have any specific questions about it. We held a workshop last week to provide the public with information about the need for the water rates, how the water rates were computed, the letter that went out, and received feedback from the public during that. As part of that, we crafted a resolution that we believe addresses the issues that were brought to our attention. So before you tonight, this first item is you have three options. We can either proceed with the public hearing as scheduled. We mailed out the notification letters on December 20th, which gives us 45 days from the time they were mailed until the public hearing today. And you're certainly welcome to proceed with the public hearing, hear the comments from the public, and then take your action tonight. That's option A. Option B is to postpone the public hearing for an additional 45 days. So we've already gone through 45 days. We could go another 45 days if the council feels that there's benefit in additional education, additional input from the public. If there's any reason to kind of delay the process to make sure that more information goes out there, that would be option B. Option C is to stop the current 45-day process as it's in place right now, and council direct staff to initiate a new 45-day process with different, potentially different language in the letter. There's a new law that went into effect. It's AB, I think it's 2257, that provides some different protections if the city chooses to go with this new 45-day process. I can tell you that as of today, we have about 1,800 customers, water and wastewater customers. We need to receive 50% plus one protests in order to veto this process. So 50% plus one of 1,800 is 901, for example. To date, we have received seven letters of protest.
One tonight, sorry.
So we have eight letters of protest in the yellow folder right now. And we really tried to do as best of a job as we could of answering questions that people had. If they called us, if they emailed, if they came into the office asking questions. Again, we made the opportunity available last week for a public workshop to take place, just to get the information out there. We feel confident, I feel confident, with the assurance of our water rate consultant along with our city attorney that the process has been done in compliance with Proposition 218. So you're perfectly within your rights to proceed forward with the public hearing today, if you wish. But I brought these other two options to you just in case you would like to either extend it for 45 days or start a new process. There is one change that we made, not really a change, but we took the input that we've received from the public and one of the consistent themes that we've seen in the seven letters that we received, is it seven or eight?
Eight, yes.
I haven't seen the eighth one. So in the seven letters that I've seen, there's kind of a consistent theme of concern within the community about this automatic rate adjustment through Utica if Utica needs to raise their rates. So, and the concern was, people, it could be read the way the letter was written. It could be read as though that's an automatic thing that's going to happen without any council direction, without any public input. So we've written into this proposed resolution, if you choose to move forward with the public hearing today, the fact that if Utica does raise their rates, staff can't just trigger that rate increase to our rate payers automatically. It still has to come back to council, and council would have to approve that. So hopefully, that clears up the, I don't know, confusion or the ambiguity involved with that one section of the letter. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Calvin? Say, you want to have any?
At this moment, I'll have a question.
Any questions? So, I'm sorry, one more thing. Just the process is, so the council will decide if they want to move forward with the public hearing or not. If they move forward with the public hearing, that's the next item on the agenda, and that's the point at which anybody in the audience is welcome to speak on the subject.
Scott, any comments?
Just technically, with the resolution itself, it says whereas we have to make a decision of these three things, and now therefore be resolved that we approve the resolution. So I'm not exactly sure what we're approving because the resolution offers three different avenues.
Yes, it's... Rose, do you want to answer that one?
I need to pull it up. You can either adopt the resolution to proceed with the public hearing, which is the next item. You can postpone the public hearing and extend the 45 days, or you can totally cancel. So either...
I understand that, but the resolution itself, I'm not sure what we're signing. Therefore, regardless...
You can even not adopt the resolution and just move forward with the next item.
I think I can answer the question. So after you choose which one you want to do, the resolution will be finalized. And if you choose option B, for example, A and C will be removed. And the final signed official resolution will include only one of those three options. These are just the options before you today. But once you take action, the two options that you don't choose will not be a part of the official resolution.
Okay. So then, are we going to open to the public?
Here we are. It's just going to go through us first and then open it up to the public?
I'll wait till we bring it back.
Okay.
I have no question.
Isabel?
I don't have any question.
Alvin?
I have no questions.
Okay, so would anybody from the public like to speak on this item about whether or not we should wait, extend, or explore the three options or move forward tonight? So if you do, please stand up at the podium and state your name and ask your question or comment, and then we will respond.
Brian, assessment? On public comment, on whether we should move forward or not? I think we should move forward. From being at the city council meetings multiple times, even the workshop last week with the one or two of us that show up from the community all the time. I think you guys have dissected enough. You guys have gone through it enough. I think you guys have thought about this process. And for me, I know with me going home and thinking about it over the past couple of months, I think you guys should go through with it. And instead of spinning our wheels and spending a lot more taxpayer money on thinking about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in present would like to make a comment regarding this item? Rose, anyone online?
Nobody's got their hammer. Thank you.
So, Scott?
Yeah, so I'm the newcomer to the base here, and a lot of this, I'm the tip of the iceberg. A lot of this happened before I got here. When I first read the notification and read the study, you know, what was available to the public, I, for one, was not happy. I felt like we didn't have enough information. But after going through the workshop and after seeing the protests, I'm comfortable that we did, we made the changes necessary, I think, to satisfy people in the correct, what I write, probably was a rightful protest. So I don't see any reason at this point, in my mind, to delay anything further.
Alvin?
I agree with Scott. I think we can end with Brian, too, standing up there. Thank you very much. And you have been a part of it, and I appreciate that. It's, we picked this apart. We've looked at it from all different angles. We've taken critiques and put our own spins and things on it. So I think at this moment, we proceed forward.
We've done some education on, did you need a public comment?
We thought this was the workshop.
It will be.
I apologize. We thought this was the workshop meeting.
It's okay.
That's why there's a bunch of new faces, so I apologize.
No, that's okay. If you have any questions as we go through the process, please ask them.
We missed the information from that other meeting.
It's okay. Thank you.
I think we go over again. No, I just appreciate all the input, since the laws changed January 1 for 218 processes, to have looked at the previous process and the new process and come to the conclusion. So I think we should move forward as well.
You know, I agree. At the workshop and based on the letters that we've received, we have been responsive as a council. We understand the concerns that were raised by the citizens here regarding the automatic increase. And as a council, that night at the workshop, we decided that it should come back to us to make that determination prior to passing that on. So I think we were responsive, and I agree we need to move forward. So with that, well, do we need a... Oh, I'm sorry, Isabel. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Don't worry. I will just echo what everyone else has said, which is that I feel that we have taken this responsibility seriously. We take everyone, all of our constituents, into consideration when we're looking at this. And considering we've been talking about this since July and being as transparent as we possibly can with it, I would like to move forward with this.
So I guess with that, I'll make a motion to approve. Or do we need anything else?
We can just...
We can approve the resolution.
So approve resolution... What's that?
Item A.
Yes, item, is that what it is on the back page? Item A. Proceed with public hearing as scheduled on February 4, 2025.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other comments? Any public comments about moving forward with the rate study? Anyone online, Rose?
No.
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Beehill?
Aye.
Charado?
Aye.
Chemente?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Brolio?
Aye.
Thank you.
So now we're moving forward with the public hearing regarding our 218 rate study. And we'll receive staff report first.
Michelle, are you going to give the report?
Oh, you can go.
Okay. So thank you, Mayor, and council members. So before you tonight, again, we have our water rate consultant, Michael de Groot, on the, attending virtually with us along with our attorney. So before you tonight is a request to open a public hearing consistent with the Proposition 218 process. Staff would recommend that you do conduct the public hearing, which would give the public in the audience, as well as those online, an opportunity to ask questions before you take action. And if no majority protest exists, meaning we don't receive 901 protests, then you can move forward with the item. So as you know, this process started in about December of 2023, and updating the rates. It's a five-year rate study. So the last rate study that we did was in 2019, and it's scheduled to occur every five years. So it's just time to do a new one. Again, we mailed out notification letters of this process, postmarked on December 20th. We have to date received eight protest letters, and they're available if you'd like to review them. The most consistent theme of the protests that we have received revolve around automatic increases. If the wholesale water rates need to increase, those from Utica. If Utica increases their rates, there is a section of the government code that allows us to increase our rates consistent with the wholesale waters' rates. That does not include your regular water rates, and it does not include your sewer rates. It's only the wholesale water that we receive from Utica. And it's, you know, quite honestly, very unlikely to happen. We heard from our partner from Utica last week and the process that that would have to go through if the rates did need to increase. I don't think we've ever had a history of those pass-through fees occurring, at least not that I'm aware of. So it's very low likely, but the government code section does allow that. The other protests that we received are generally around, generally around, I'm trying to think of the right word, displeasure, disagreement with just any rate increases in general. I think that this council has done a great job in my short time being here. The initial, the initial recommendation from the consultant was a 5% increase in water and a 5% increase in wastewater. And the council directed staff to go back and whittle it down as much as possible. We went through all of our CIP, that's capital improvement projects, and that's what a lot of these rates, that's what these fees support. It's things like when a sewer line needs to be replaced or if a water line needs to be replaced. These fees go towards that type of project in addition to just the daily demands that it takes to keep a water system running, both water and wastewater. So as a result of council directing staff to go back and make the rate increases as very minimal as possible, we were able to reduce it from the recommended 5% increase down to 2% in water, in wastewater, and 3% in water. That's down from 5%. Plus, it's not an automatic increase. It may not happen every year. These are the absolute maximum amounts that we can raise the rates over the next five years. And this council has a history of going year after year and really taking a look at the needs of the system, the needs of the capital improvement projects. And I've only been here for six months, but when I look back at the history, I saw years where there were no increases. Even though you had the ability to increase a certain percentage, you chose not to because staff brought you a program that would allow for rates to remain consistent and not just arbitrarily increase because you can't. Now, this does give you the authority every year to raise it 2% and 3%, but you don't have to. And I suspect that staff will continue to bring you a package that gives you the option to either raise it to the maximum level or some level below that, or not at all. And that will happen every year. As part of the budget process, staff will bring you options of what level of service do you want to provide to your constituents in terms of water and wastewater, and what is that going to cost? So again, these are maximum potential increases. It cannot go above that, and it's not an automatic thing. It's not saying that your rates will go to this amount. There will be an opportunity every year for council to either take action to increase it or take action to remain the same. As part of the process, we actually eliminated, not eliminated, we postponed several capital improvement projects. When you look at the list of capital improvement projects, which is water line replacements, wastewater line replacements, we took a look at what realistically can we do in five years? We have projects on the books that we do need to do at some point, but we're not going to do it in five years. And that's what allowed the council to decrease the rates down to, from 5% down to 2 and 3%, because we postponed some of those things that were on the books that we know we're not going to get to in that time. So why make people pay for things that we know we're not going to do? You guys did a great job of that, and I appreciate that. So before you tonight, you have the recommendation from staff. You have the recommendation from the water rate consultant. You've received the feedback from the public workshop last week. We have the eight protest letters here if you would like to review them. This has all been through our legal department. Legal has given me assurance that this is fully in compliance with the Proposition 218 requirements, and you are clear legally to proceed. So staff now recommends that you ask any clarifying questions that you have of staff, and then open the public hearing.
So Steve, I have just one question. Would it be any benefit for Rose to pull up PowerPoint and just quickly go through that for those folks that may not have seen it? Rose, if you can find it. And then, Michelle, of importance to you folks, will it be the first or second meeting in May where we actually set the rates for the upcoming...
I would say the second. That would be when we would bring our proposed budget and water rates to council.
So the second meeting in May, if you're interested, that is when the council will consider, do we raise it two? Do we raise it three? Do we raise it proportionately? What do we do? So that would be another good meeting to come to. And here are our thought process as we move forward with that.
Do you have those on the poster board?
I do have them.
Okay. And just...
And we have on the website also. People are welcome to go and watch the workshop. It's available on the main page of the website, the video. So did you want to go through it again?
Can we just, some of the more important slides? Like you want to pull up the CIP projects?
Sure.
And we also have handouts, too, folks, if you haven't received any.
So it hasn't been decided how much to...
No, not, no.
I heard two and three.
Well, it is. That's two.
We haven't approved it yet. Wait until you hear us. We hear you all talk about it.
Well, not going to be necessarily raised.
But we've come to this. We know this is what it's going to be.
Could be less.
Don't you talk out there.
He just said this.
You know, I mean...
So this is essentially a process that we have to go through. So that was in this hearing and tonight. And then in May, we would be looking at that. What this is going to show you is that max.
So you haven't decided on it yet?
This would be your maximum. So it's going to be no more than that.
Yeah, we may answer some questions when we do the side show.
Let me know when you're ready.
I'm sorry.
Let me know when you're ready. That's part of why we want this. We don't, we need to be transparent to you. So please ask your questions.
Okay, so first slide, Rose. So this was a meeting that we planned for. As we went through this process, we decided that we wanted to have a public workshop and invite the public to come and ask questions, get additional... invite the public to come and ask questions, get additional information. And that occurred last Wednesday, I believe. That's when this PowerPoint was presented. And it was a combination of our water rate consultant, I took a portion of it, and our finance director, Michelle Gonzalez, presented a portion of it. But I'll just go through it briefly. Please stop me if you have any questions, because I'm going to go through this much more quickly than we did last Wednesday. So, that was the purpose of it. Next slide. Our water rate consultant talked about why we are here, like the decision-making process for the rate increases. He went over the justification for how the percentage of increases, how it started at five and went down to two and three, and the justification for that, and went over a little bit of the water rate study itself, which provides a level of detail that's in addition to what you're going to see tonight here. Next slide. So, as our attorney has mentioned in the past, there are procedural and there are substantive legal requirements. And our water rate consultant and our attorney's office have advised staff that we have met both the procedural and the substantive requirements of Proposition 218. Next slide. An overview of the water rate study. So, the purpose of it is it evaluates the financial needs of the utility system. The utility system is the water and the wastewater system. It provides long-term financial sustainability. As you know, it's expensive to replace water lines. We have to dig up the ground. There are certain areas of town, Booster Way, for example, is a success story of a capital improvement project that we just completed. If you think about the city as a whole, all of the sewer water, all of the outgoing water, so water comes into your home, all of the outgoing water basically bottlenecks on Booster Way. And they were old pipes, and they were not in great shape. So, the city used these types of money to completely replace that entire system. And it was our Sutton that did that work. And Duber is our consultant that managed it. Chris O'Flynn, our public work superintendent, who basically manages our water and sewer system, had a part in it. But that's an example of what this type of money can be used for. If that isn't replaced and there's a little tiny leak there, the whole system of the entire city is backed up. And the sewer water can't get to the treatment plant to then be sanitized and discharged. Plus, that bottleneck in that area of Booster prevented any additional customers from coming onto our system. For example, we have Habitat for Humanity coming into town, they're in the process of building. That project could not go forward if we didn't replace the lines in Booster Way because of all of, they all connects right there. So, that's an example. Compliance with state and federal regulations, fair and equitable distribution of cost amongst ratepayers. That means we can't charge one household one thing and another household another. It has to be consistent amongst all of the ratepayers. Next slide, Rose. Key components of the study, there are four of them. There's the cost service analysis, there's the revenue requirements, there's the rate design and structure, and there's the capital improvement projects. The cost service analysis is what our water rate consultant did for us. We need to project what the revenue requirements are. How much does it cost us to run the system, to pay the staff, to buy the chemicals, to operate the plant? What's the revenue requirements for that? The rate and design structure, and then we've already talked about capital improvements. Next slide. The notice and approval process for Proposition 218. We did issue public notifications. They were postmarked on December 20th. Today is the public hearing. From the day that we mailed the letters on December 20th until today, that is the protest period. Anybody can, we have eight of them, eight individuals, eight individual ratepayers had a protest to this increase. Today, since we're moving forward with the public hearing, today ends that public protest period. And then the last bullet point on this slide is what you're going to be asked to do after you hear from the public, and that is to take action as part of the public hearing. Next slide. I'm not going to go over each one of these capital improvements, but I will just tell you that there is, these are water, so there's water side and there's sewer side. These next couple of slides talks about the water capital improvements that we believe we can accomplish in the next five years. As I mentioned a little bit ago, there were many more projects on this list, and we postponed them. We're basically shelving them because we want to do something that's reasonable. And these are the projects that we believe we can accomplish in the next five years. You can see at the bottom, the first project's $2 million, the next one's $680,000, the next one's $2.3 million. So, just on this slide alone, there's four and a half, there's $5 million roughly. Next slide. Then there is another 980, about $1 million, and another 760. Next slide. So, just in water alone, in zero to five years, there's $7 million that we believe we can get done. $7 million in work that we believe we can get done. Paygo means these water rates would support these replacements and these improvements. When you see the six through 10 years at the bottom, those are the projects that were initially part of this study that we don't think we can accomplish in five years. So, we're not making, we're not asking you to pay for them now. We're postponing them until we get these first projects done, and then we'll reconsider it with the next rate study to see if we can accomplish that. Next slide.
I have a question for you real quick.
Yes, sir.
Where's that first project at?
I'm sorry, which, what is this?
Water transmission line replacement. Don't say where it's at. All I want to say where it's at.
Yeah, there's a little picture, and it's a little deceiving. It's not real clear. It's basically, do you know where the, where the water comes into the system from Utica? It's up on Murphy's, not Murphy's.
I probably know better than you.
I'm sorry?
I probably know better than you do.
You probably do, yeah. It's where that's.
Right across Miller and Bites.
Yeah. So, that, that first project is, there's one line, there's one water line that takes your water from that plant down to where it then gets distributed to all of our customers. It's old.
I don't need, I just, I just wanted one more.
Okay. Yeah, so that's what it is. It's the main transmission line that brings your water from that plant down into the system. Couple of slides, Rose. There you go. So, now we're on wastewater projects. There are these three wastewater projects. The first one's about $3 million. You'll notice that it says Booster Way. We've already completed that project. This is a three-pronged project. It's Booster Way, Vallesito, and East Angels, and we've already finished the first one. We're now moving on to Vallesito. The second project is about $700,000, and that replaces the sewer line in downtown, downtown Angels Camp on Main Street. And again, it's old and it needs to be replaced. That's this project. The third project is replacing the sewer line on Murphy's Grade Road. Next slide, Rose. $4.6 million in wastewater projects that we believe we can accomplish in the next five years. And you can see the six through 10-year project, again, another million, $1.2 million. We didn't think that we can get that done in five years, so we're not including that in this rate study. Next slide. If you want to consider how Angels Camp rates compare to other areas, you can see on the bottom, there's Oakdale, Valley Springs, Yosemite West, Angels Camp, and so on. Our monthly water rates, the dotted line is the average for the reason, for the region. So, we're actually a little bit below. The blue arrow shows our current water rate for an average residential, single-family customer. The white arrow, $82.26, shows the maximum that it could increase in the first year. It doesn't mean it's going to increase. It means that that's the maximum that the council could improve as an increase in the first year. And if they do approve that increase, you'll see that we're still below the average. Next slide. This is the wastewater side. So, the first slide was water, this is wastewater. Same thing, you see the dotted line? We are above the regional average in wastewater. The regional average is about $82. We're currently at $108. If the council decides to increase the rates to its maximum level of average, single-family residents would go from $108 to about $110. And again, that's the maximum it could go. Next slide. What this means for you, this is just additional information that I think we've already talked about. Next slide. Average bill for a residential unit. The current rate structure shows $62.52 for water, $13.91 for UWPA, and $107.95 for wastewater, for a total of $187.38. That's the current average bill for a residential customer. If the council were to, were to increase rates to the maximum that they could, 2% and 3%, your water bill would go from $187 to $192 in year one. And by the time year five comes, if they increase to the maximum level every year for the next five years, it would go from $187 this year to $213 in year five. Again, that's if they increase, if they increase to the maximum level every year for five years in a row. That's the worst-case scenario. Next slide. We are cleaning up the process as part of this rate study. Right now, there's, there's a couple of different categories of ratepayers. This new proposal, either you're a residential customer or you're a non-residential customer. For a non-residential customer, the rate right now is $211.94 currently. It could increase year one to 217, and it could increase year five to 240. So, it would go from 211 to 240 if the council increases 2% and 3% consistently every year for the next five years. Again, that's a worst-case scenario. Next slide. UWPA, I saw that we have Joel Metzger in the back. Thank you, Joel, for being here with us tonight. So, we are partners with Union Public Utilities District. And so, Angels and Union are in a JPA, a joint powers authority, in an entity that's called UWPA. It's a lot of acronyms, and it took me a long time to get all the letters straight, but I think I finally got it. It's also known as Utica. So, if you hear Utica, it's UWPA. UWPA is the entity through this JPA that provides raw water to the city, and it provides raw water to Union. So, when you hear about potential for automatic increases and could the rates go even higher than 2% and 3%, this is the only circumstance under which the rates could go higher. And what it would take is multiple years of, drought is not the right word, because I don't think it would technically be a drought, but a very poor water year, year after year, where the cost to Utica could then be passed on to Union and to Angels. As it is right now, we are trying to come to an agreement that would stabilize those rates and make them known to us for the next five years. Because up until this point, we really don't know what we would pay for water. We have historical averages, but we are trying to get into an agreement where those rates are set for the next five years. Next slide. The UWPA rate, this is that five-year agreement that I talked about with the, it starts at the top with 24, 25 for $370,000. This is what the city is going to pay to the JPA of UWPA for raw water for the next five years. We're going to pay 370 the first year, 407,000 the next year, 447, and so on. So, what this does is it makes costs known to us for the next five years, and that's the basis on which our water rate consultant is recommending. They first recommended a 10% increase in your Utica fees, and the council has decided to use some of their reserve funds to reduce that rate from 10% down to 6.22. We're still going to pay a 10%, but the council is making up the difference between 10% and 6.22 through some reserve funds that we have. Next slide. Where's your money go? We have a very small staff in Angels, and that staff of water and wastewater is made up of one superintendent. That's the boss sitting back there raising his hand. We have one guy that's in charge of the entire system. He also has a, he has two supervisors, and each of those supervisors have about five people, between four to five people. So, your entire water and wastewater system is run by about 10 people. And those 10 people not only operate your water and your wastewater system, but they mow your parks, they fix your roads, they empty the trash cans downtown. This very small staff does a whole bunch of things. And so, this is where some of that money goes in addition to capital improvement projects. It takes staff to run the system, and that's an overview of the staff we have. Next slide. Water operating expense, within that staff that I just talked about, you can see that chart shows how much we pay in salaries, how much we pay in benefits, how much we pay in operating expense, and so on. So, that's what it takes to actually run the system on a day-to-day, hour-to-hour basis. Next slide. Same thing for wastewater. You can see how much we pay in salaries, how much we pay in operating expenses, equipment. The one additional thing that's in wastewater that we don't have in water is debt payments, right? So, there's debt that we owe on the wastewater that we need to service those debts. That's what that $329,000 figure is. Next slide. Investing in our community, I think we've already talked about this. Next slide. That was the end of the very brief summary of the workshop that we had last week. Any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
I think it would also be good just to quickly, maybe Michelle can talk about it, is the low-income discount program.
Correct. So, we have a paper here. You're welcome to pick one up. This is our customer assistance program. We call it a CAT program. So, if you qualify for PG&E care, we don't do any other check than a copy of the bill to show that you're receiving that assistance, and you can receive a credit, $20 for water and $25 for wastewater on your bill monthly. And that's paid through non-rate revenue, meaning the late fees we collect. Those sort of fees that aren't related to rate revenue come to offset this program, and we put it back in to help our customers. So, that's available through this application. You can call the office, get this email, you can go to our website, or you can come in, and we'll help you fill that out.
Okay. With that, let's open up our public hearing. Those of you who have questions or comments, please step up to the microphone, state your name, and we'll, hopefully, we'll address your questions.
Is it me? I live in Angels here. Here's my letter. As far as the letter filing, it kind of really is a little secretive, because everything else you guys do is email us this, or do this, or do that. But yeah, when you email in, it gets kicked out. We had to put it in writing, physically hand-delivered, which I think if you're going to sit back and make us do everything electronically at home, request records, everything else, you guys all should, should have opened that up, go flat email. It should save a lot of time. You probably got a lot more input. That's a great study. What it cost?
The water rate today was $60,000 in total.
$60,000.
And that's the wastewater study too?
Correct.
How much did the UPA pay for?
They don't, they don't pay for it.
But we did a water study for them. Did they pay in it?
We didn't do a water study for them. It was only for the city.
We got a rate increase from the mic.
That rate increase, as Steve explained, is that prior to this year and going in forward, there wasn't a budget set, so we didn't know how much Utica would charge. And so, working with UPUD and working with Utica and working with our city council, we came up with a five-year plan for a budget that would increase by 10% a year. we came up with a five-year plan for a budget that would increase by 10% a year. So the increase that you're seeing is based on that. But UTICA did not do a rate study. It's our rate study.
Okay. How many utility companies does this company represent that are in this findings? Do they use comparisons? Do they represent those companies also?
Michael's online.
Michael, are you able to answer that? Hold on one second.
We had to be here. You should have been here. You used Groveland, Yosemite, you used all these other companies in the study. And I'm just curious how many of them that this company that's doing this report represents.
Give me one second. Go ahead and try speaking, Michael.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you.
Yes, so the agencies listed in the survey are all public utilities. And they are comparable to Angels Camp. And that they're in the region, and they provide water and wastewater service. Some of them are quite small, like the Mariposa County Agencies. You have Yosemite West, Don Pedro, Mariposa Pines, and Glitterville. And you know, some of those could be as low as 20 equivalent dwelling units. And those are heavily subsidized by the counties. You can see they're quite low. And that's because they really desperately need to increase their rates.
With all due respect, that wasn't my question.
Michael, is your firm consulting with them? Have you provided them any service, any of those companies?
In terms of this survey, we do work with Mariposa County, which is why I know that they are in very desperate shape to raise rates. And I think in the past, we've worked with Groveland. And that's it that I know of.
Thank you.
So moving on, but it seems like this guy or this company, they go in and do a study for you. They compare with other people they represent. You guys get yours up, and then go sell their service to that company, get theirs up, and then keep going back and forth. We got the fox watching the innocent. Second thing, UPUD is $69.15 for 5/8 meter. Murphy's is sanitary, $60 a month. Where are we at?
Okay, so again, Michael, in May, when we set the rates, that 6% is a ceiling. And so we can look at expanding reserves. So again, what we're looking at is the ceiling at which we can raise.
No, my point is, Mike, is we're not comparable with everybody else in our area. You want to look at Murphy's? Pretty much same population, service the same amount of people roughly, right? So moving forward, CCWD is expensive.
Michael, but also it has to do with the number of customers we're serving.
How many are in Murphy's? I bet it's real close to 1,800, 1,900.
Yeah, we're not there yet.
He just said we have 1,800.
Right, but I think there are 2,000.
I don't think 200 people is going to make that big of a change. Because the more people you got, the more maintenance you got, the more personnel you got. So my background is I had over 20 years with East Bay Mud. They ship their water, 92 miles, raw water, to open and treat it. Their water rates are $40 a month for water, $35 for wastewater, plus usage. Why are we so high? And they have 1,800 employees. We have 10. It doesn't matter. It's all relevant. Their pipes are 92 miles. They got people spread from Party all the way to Walnut Creek, all through the Bay Area. They have 1,800 employees. So their expenses are as full as.
But they have more customers.
They have more customers, they have more expense. Anyway.
Michael, I don't want to get you off.
Your barbeque is not working.
I think the timer went off, Mike. I'm sorry. I think your timer is at five minutes.
You're on five minutes for public for an agenda item?
Yeah.
All right, we get five.
Oh, well.
Yeah, but it's a public hearing, guys. It's still the same.
Yep. Well, here you're supposed to be over.
So can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
We have less back and forth. When they have to say for five minutes, we have less back and forth, and they more input they can give them in that five minutes.
That was my question, I think. Because of back and forth, I don't know. My thing would be to stop and listen to them, and then maybe we could jot some somebody could take some notes and answer some questions at the end, rather than back and forth.
Michael, you have another five minutes, buddy.
My biggest concern is the UTICA Power Authority. It's ballooned out of control. The city's got six full-time employees that run a water plant and a wastewater plant. That's it. The other six part-time employees at the public works take care of the distribution and collection. At East Bay Mud, where we were at, right here in Valley Springs, our water operators had four water plants, four wastewater plants, a chemical building, two pumping plants. Five guys total. That's a chief plant operator and four operators. I think we're a little overstaffed. We could make some reductions. I just think we're not making reductions. As far as the UTICA Power Authority goes, what happened to the original agreement that we paid $2 a month when it was originally taken over to service the debt to buy the system? That was between CCWD, UPUD, and City of Angels. When they originally took it over 25 years ago, roughly, when they purchased PG&E. They now have eight full-time employees and two administrators. Their annual payroll is almost $1 million a month, or year. That's crazy for a system that ran with three people, and now they got 10. It was supposed to be self-sufficient. And it seems like it's just ballooning out. And we're picking up $18 a month now to go up. So I think there's some cuts that need to be made before we can talk about increases, is what my point is. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you'd like to speak about it outside, we'd want to talk about it. I don't need your comments.
Anytime. I'll meet you right outside the door.
Please state your name, sir.
Francisco Dela Cruz. I'm curious about your non-revenue water loss statistics for your organization. What are you currently running as an average for non-revenue water?
Non-revenue water, meaning?
That's stuff that you get, you pump, you treat, and you distribute, but you don't bill.
How would be?
So typically, it's known as leaks, losses. Some of them are known losses, like your fire department goes out and puts on a fire, or they test the hydrants, or what have you. But non-revenue water is defined by the California Water Board. And I think it's a statistic that you're supposed to report. So I'm curious as to what Angels' non-revenue water loss, out of 100 gallons, how many gallons do you bill for?
So on average, we lose less than 10% per month.
So that's what you report to the state of non-revenue water loss of less than 10%. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sharon Chaconi. I just have questions. I have lived in my house for 22 years. When I got into my house in 2003, my water was $112 a month. Now granted, no increases, increasing, sorry, no what's the word I want to say? It wasn't increased for quite a few years, up to probably 18 years. None of you were on, you know, on I want to call it a board. Thank you. I'm so used to board. So you guys aren't at fault for that. But what I'm asking is, okay, so we went from $112 to about $175, just like that. Like, I don't know, what, five years ago, four years ago? Astronomically high, okay? I wish that group that were here previously would have gradually done it. So we've been hit hard really fast. Now we're being hit hard again. My question is, can you guys please work with, after five years, because it's probably going to go up again, would you guys please, small increments? I don't care if it's once every year, small increments. Don't do this against these people, because it's really hard, especially you're the only provider in the family. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Question? Anyone, Rose, online?
Nobody has a hand.
Nobody has a hand up? So will do we just continue? Do we now bring it back to us? Okay. I am going to close it. Before I close, does anybody else have any other comments that they'd like to make?
I just want to say thank you for that presentation. Regardate it again for our benefit.
Very nice.
So once again, Rose, does anybody online have anything that they'd like to share or ask?
No.
Anybody else in public? Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Scott, any questions or comments?
First, just a little bit of housekeeping. On the resolution itself, on item three, in the first sentence, you eliminate a couple S's. It says, should UWPA experience? It should be, it says experiences, it should be experience. A drought year, and require, it should be required, not requires. So just eliminate those two little S's. You know, it's never fun to have to increase any kind of bills on anybody. I came into this particular program late. This is, this is the first year I'm on the council. When I first heard about this, and you know, I had some issues regarding the notifications, regarding the pass-through that we've discussed already ad nauseam. But I think that, you know, most of my questions, if not all, were answered. I do understand we want, it's much, much better to do incremental increases than it is to get hit one big time. And that's what this is. This is a 2% wastewater and 3% water, and then the 6% on UTICA. You know, I don't necessarily disagree with Mike, that there might be some staffing issues that we have, and might be places we could cut costs. And I've been pretty vocal about wanting to just look at our water system as a whole. We have the same system that we've had for, what, almost 100 years? You know, is that the best way to go? Is there another way to get our water? Or if not another way, is there a better way, a cheaper way? And if not that, is there a redundant way? Can we create some kind of redundancy in our water delivery? Because being at the mercy of a wooden flume, you know, coming down the mountain is not ideal. So, you know, I'm all for investigating what we do, why we do it, make sure that before we put millions and millions of dollars into our program with the Penn stock replacements, or the, you know, the power plant issues we have, the licensing stuff, before we investigate a lot of money into the program, let's make sure it's the right one. Let's make sure that there's not a better mousetrap. But for now, this is a small increase in the fees. And it's certainly, it's a five-year. I look at it as kind of a Band-Aid to give some time to make sure that what we're doing is the right way to go. And I'm in support of what we're doing here tonight.
Carolyn.
Yeah, the increase that you mentioned, you know, having 14 years of not having our bills raised and then raised significantly was, it's hard on a lot of people. I hear you on that. And we are all ratepayers as well, so we're watching that too. And I do believe that every year, we will be looking at CIP, which is obviously huge cost to the city. And if we get to a point, if it's year three or year four, whatever it is, and we know we can't get to it, we absolutely, that will play into our decision on whether or not we will raise fees that year. So we'll be watching that. We'll be looking at it, evaluating those CIP projects, making sure if they can actually get on the books and be done, or if they can't, kind of looking at that. So being diligent and, you know, just making sure we're using our money in a good way. And I think that's it for me.
Isabel.
Yeah, so I'm in agreement with what my fellow council members have said. And I just, it's important to note that we are sensitive, I wrote this out, to the fact that rates have gone up significantly in the past. I remember it was $112.67 every month. I knew exactly what it was going to be. And so they've gone up significantly in the past while capital improvement projects have stagnated. So I want to thank you for being here and sharing your opinion. We do hear what you're saying. Like Steve started out by saying, it was 5, 5, and 10. And we're at 2, 3, and 6.22, while using those reserves, which comes from the money that we've collected in the past. And as I mentioned, so we've sharpened our pencil, and we are committed to annually reviewing the rates and the budget, and we're committed to the completion of those projects. So just want to reiterate to all of you that we are aware you put us in these seats. And we represent you, so. But having said all that, I'm in favor of moving forward with this rate study.
I was part of that whole $112 to $175 five years ago, and it was rough. And I think it was 12 to 15 years. It had been stagnant, and that is a huge increase. But what we've done in that timeframe is built up our coffers. And now we're actually allowed, because we have the money to do those projects that have been needed to be done. The line feeding down here needs to be replaced. There's a lot of things that have to be done. And I'm really happy that these projects are finally on the books and going to make our systems better. I mean, some of our sewer has water that inflows during the winter. It's fresh potable water, and then it gets treated as sewer water. So there's a lot of stuff. We have old clay terracotta pipe out there. There's a lot of projects that need to be done, and I'm happy that we're getting to do this now. Oh, what else? We took $5 million out of the budget, out of this. And I feel pretty good that we all whittled it down, and we looked at it pretty extensively. And I'm happy we're getting the jobs done still. And I think we did, we had to do a study for this 218 hearing. I know with UTICA, we have sat, the Murphys and Angels managers have both sat there, and the board. And there's two of us that sit on that board, two from Murphy's and the citizen at large. And we go over that budget with a fine-tooth comb. And they have a bare-bones budget, and actually spending down their reserves to keep costs as low as they can right now too. So I think everybody's done a really good job at making this as palatable as it can be. Thank you.
And Mike, to address the UTICA, those board meetings are open. So there's two of us from here, two of us, or two from Union and a member at large. And so when we go through all of that, it is open to Angels Camp residents to come and hear what they're doing. That system had gone a long time without any CIP going on. So it is interesting to sit through those and, you know, listen to what's going on there. But that was a budget process that I had sat through last year, where we cut significantly out of that budget. It was four hours of line item by line item, like investigating why we're using Comcast, or why we're doing this, or why we're doing that. And so just want to give you that update.
Again, as everyone else said, we all appreciate, we're all ratepayers. We're all cognizant of the fact that dollars are getting tight. You know, one of the things that we, and if you had been here from the beginning, as Steve said, you know, we met multiple times. And, you know, one of those meetings probably lasted over three hours with our rate consultant. And we beat one another up, talking about what we should do and what we shouldn't do. And one of the things that we all agreed on is that over the last five years, we built up this reserve. And so we made a conscious choice to use those dollars that we've saved up to do these projects. And, you know, there were a number of reasons why those projects didn't occur when they occurred. There was COVID, there's been change, you know, in city staff, et cetera. But, you know, we've, this council has made a conscious effort to spend that money on the things that we said we were going to do, and now we're doing it. The sad thing about it is, we still have a reserve, but those projects that were listed, except for Booster Way, were projects that were based on, what, $2,020 or 20?
$20, yes.
Yeah, so, you know, inflation is going to eat up some of that reserve, that we have that reserve. And again, I know trust in politicians and that is a tough thing to do. But, you know, you need to sit in these meetings when we talk about rates. You need to help us decide what we need to do. And as I think one of our, Caroline or someone said, Isabel, that, you know, if there's a year that we don't have to raise the rates, then, you know, we may not have to raise the rates. It doesn't arbitrarily mean that we're going to continue raising the rates. And, you know, and you, well, I think the difference between Angels Camp and a lot of places is that we're all invested in making sure that this continues to be a vibrant a vibrant community. And in order to do that, we all have to work. And in order to do that, we all have to work together, you know, and no one likes to see things increase, but what we're trying to do is increase it incrementally, with being mindful of the fact that we've got to finish projects. We have to, that I and I project on Murphy's Gray Road, for example, one of the projects that was listed that we're not going to do is to expand the wastewater treatment plant, because if Chris can control the amount of water that's flowing into our sewer system and decrease that amount, then the need to expand the system may not be necessary, or as big. Correct, Chris?
Yes.
So, at least we're being proactive and working and moving forward. So, anything else? Steve?
I just, again, want to thank the council. I haven't been here long, but a consistent thing that I heard from the council in these knock-down, drag-out, three-hour meetings that we had was, this council did everything that it could to keep the rates down as low as possible. So, I want to thank you for doing that. Thank Michelle and the staff for all the work that you've done, our water rate consultant, our wells, as well as our attorney's office. I appreciate all the good work. Thank you.
And I just want to say one more thing. At the last city council meeting, we had a gentleman who was concerned about whether or not our, we would have enough water to fight a fire, very similar to what happened down. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, we're doing is working with other agencies to make sure that we're prepared to do that. So, and as Scott has said, one of the things that we've talked about is a redundant water source. You know, the Darby Fire destroyed that 3/4 mile flume, you know, so how do we get water here? And so, working with UPUD, working with Utica, working with CCWD, we've got to figure out a way to get water to, into the City of Angels in case of an emergency. And, you know, what we're currently doing today doesn't mean it's what we're going to do in the future, but what we do today helps guide the decisions that we make in the future. And I hope all of you understand that, and I truly appreciate you folks being here.
Mike, I just wanted to clarify and answer a question, because I know, Mike, you said, our consultant, that you're here, and so he should be here, too. And one of the things that I'd like to point out, and something that we take conscientious effort of, is our consultant lives very far away, and part of what we get charged for are travel fees, so thanks to the internet, he's able to be with us, and so I hope that answers your question, Mike. But that's, those are the things that we take into consideration, because it is your money. It's our money.
Once again, I am, I want to make sure that we've addressed all of your questions. Does anyone else have any questions here, or?
I guess I just don't understand.
I close it. I know, I know.
You closed the hearing.
All right, all right.
I'll ask afterwards.
Anybody? Okay, so we're going to move forward?
I might want to move aside, but one of you four should.
So, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 25-06.
I'll second.
Any other comments? Hearing none, Rose?
V. Hill.
Aye.
Sherada.
Aye.
Shemantin.
Aye.
Monkara.
Aye.
Brolyu.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we'll take a short break, folks. There's 10 minutes.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. You haven't done yet?
Yeah.
Well, you did a good job. I mean, the whole council is.
Thank you.
Well, you've sat through some of those meetings.
Oh, okay. I thought you were paying.
I just kind of, kind of, you know, called it.
Because you had the question about the door. Your answer, you have. Tom Tractor, sorry?
Sure, it's easier being a superintendent.
If I zoom in on the front, like right now?
Yes.
Are you going, are you going, are you going? Okay, well, let's go together. Let's go together.
Oh, sorry. It's all the way in the back, so.
All the way in the back.
Yes.
I agree. That's what it is.
This is a street view right now. Let me go over there.
How many towns have you replaced?
I don't know.
Not really like, hey.
After 30 years or 50 years.
She has three terms about the tree. No.
That's a James Bond.
The application is on. What's the website? Right here.
So, we don't choose to grow?
No.
So, we're either with too much water or too much rain, or both at the same time, that that can take us too much. It's going to be true.
I don't believe that.
We have. They told us that it was okay to leave that plant.
Well, this shows well, like I said, your family. He wants the video, he wants what they say. I know. I was trying to do this. Okay.
I'm being choked up, all right? Because I went back to Mexico.
There's no reason though why public artists cannot be going out there, releasing something and putting something on their stamp.
Yeah, I live up past. I left at 5:45 every morning. Maybe we can go to Sacramento. Love the sand. Every morning. Why do they quit? They're doing the battle.
Oh, and that I.
I want to go and ask, all right, he's responsible for someone's life. This is the one. I was so. So. It's.
Yeah, but one of them. I don't know what he's.
Show that. You know.
That's the one on the front.
I was on the second. Look, you know, I think the word.
That's actually.
It was. It really was. Because that's all that.
Yeah, I know. I lived up to 13 years. I grew up in every day. Now it's one of the reasons. That's why.
You're good? I've been there 38, 40 years.
She's serving. Certified arborist. Yep, I know. We can have a new. Area. We're all about not doing that.
You have to come and act.
I'm sorry. My mother's responding bad, letting us know. I said, contact them. I can send them an email and ask them to. It's just. I don't know how long it takes. You're the first in the process of doing this. No, we're thinking the other was getting ready or not, but. Some are ready. They're doing the same thing for the police department. They have a lot of.
Ladies and gentlemen. Come out together.
They've collected an unaided psychic. We'll get this fucking car out.
I came in and there wasn't even a seat for me.
We need to get one with your name on it.
Okay, moving on to another public hearing.
No, no, not yet.
What come right?
The bottom of the page.
Oh, pardon. Oh, I'm sorry.
Why is yours printed weird?
I don't know why mine is printed weird. Okay, I apologize.
Because he prints it out.
Oh. So, we're going to move on to Amy?
Yes.
With the rural recreation and tourism program, Utica Park Lightner Mine Expansion Project Update.
There, council members, we have enough decent weather that the outdoor gym has almost been completed, the pitlot. They have one layer that they're going to put on top, which will be the final layer. It'll be greenish casing, but we don't know what color it will ultimately be. We met with Calaveras Garden Club. They have, would love to landscape behind the bathrooms and along the parking area. We could have a planting area there that we're just going to let it sort of be until we can afford it, and they would like to take that over. We said.
Is there going to be water there for them?
Yes, there is water. That is, we have the irrigation there. We have the stuff prepped. They just will be putting in the plans and doing the design. And the PG&E grant was submitted for the kitchen. Again, I don't know how much luck we'll have, but as soon as we hear on that, we will let you know. Otherwise, we're moving ahead on schedule. And so, fingers crossed, they're, they started the landscaping plan. They'll be working on it now until opening, and if, as soon as the weather clears, they'll be doing a bunch more cement pours for our ADA access and whatnot.
So, Amy, all of that forming that they're doing, is that, they're going to pour slabs around the existing kitchen? Is that for walkways, or is that going to be additional? No, that's not going to be.
That's all for walkways for ADA access.
Okay, okay. And then, Amy, included in your report, you, we asked you to get a cost, just a seal if we crack sealed. I think that's something the council can consider. You know, the more I think about it, the more, I think maybe we need to wait and see what that project looks like. We always can crack seal, but do we really need to re-oil it?
We did get a cost estimate, $26,000. We'll be bringing it to you at your next meeting.
Right.
We did check with Public Works. They would be able to do the ceiling, the crack ceiling, and then we could come through and do the ceiling, which we would prefer to do and then do the lining, because then we would have to line twice. But, so there's that.
Okay. Is any other council member? Scott, any questions?
Nope.
Caroline? Isabel?
Nope, I saw the staircase.
Yes.
New and exciting.
With that's it. The new, the new old staircase, right next to one used to be an old staircase.
Alvin?
No, I just want to say thank you to Amy and thank you to Boyer and everybody doing a wonderful job, and things are cruising right along.
Cruising.
Thank you to all staff.
They were there like on Sunday.
Yeah, I saw them working on weekends. They do, okay.
Very cool. So, I'm going to try to follow the agenda that's.
We have some public comments.
Say you got.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment. I didn't even see you. Well, we'll open it up to public comment here, and then we'll go online.
We're friends.
There you go.
We are. I'm sorry, guys. I already discussed something with Amy, and she kind of, yeah, she figured out my problem, my answer, or whatever. Okay, yeah, that was the first thing on the list this time. Oh, an estimate on the opening? I've had several questions. People are like, is it even going to open this year? Just a month.
April 1st.
Are you fooling?
April 4th?
You want me to tell people? This is April 1st.
Tell them April 7th.
That's the city's biggest joke. Okay, no, that's great. That's funny. That's, everybody's looking forward to it. The seal coating you talked about, is that additional cost that the city council is going to have to?
If we, it's something that we would consider.
It's an additional cost, so it's not in the budget?
It's not in the budget.
So, why can't we come with the additional cost of shading, so that the city council can acquire that money, so the shading can be done, so that the playground is usable? If seal coating, the shading is a must, just as much as the seal coating is, if you think about it. To me, even more so. I'm sorry. But the shading is, it's vital to the usage. Yet, everybody keeps, well, the money wasn't in the, it's not in the budget. We don't have it. Okay, seal coating, that's an additional fund. I believe it's $17,000?
22 for the seal coating.
No, for the shading.
No, we never got a quote, yes. We never got a quote for it.
You showed me a number.
Oh, no, there's $117,000 each for shade structures, full shade structures.
No, I don't think, you showed me a thing. Yep, you did. Didn't write it down. You did one day when I asked you, because then I asked you if there was a way possibly, and I'm not good at doing things like that. I was getting public to try and start to raise some of the funds. So, you had given me a number. So, you had given me a number. No problem, don't worry about it. Um, oh, yeah, that's, that's kind of the thing going back to the shading. The money for the benches and the money for the trees. Where is that money going once they've been sold?
I would assume back to the project in some form, in some way or another.
In some form. Could that form possibly? I'm looking at six benches left of $1,500 a bench, that's $9,000. And then I looked at the cost of the trees, and for the trees, there's still, am I right on that one? Yep, that's the benches. And then the trees, roughly $8,000, that's $17,000 that could go to the shading. And there are the trees that came down, which were providing shade in the park. So, doesn't it therefore make sense to anybody but me that the money from the trees that came down that was shade now goes towards the shading for the park, which is critical so the park can be used? That's all I have to say except...
Thank you.
What happened?
Thanks.
And what gets...
We answered the house.
Michelle, any, I mean, Rose, anyone online regarding this item?
Yeah, no, you're good.
Okay.
Don't worry. Mr. Member, I can give you some very good answers.
Oh, sure.
Um, and answer to your question, it has to do with the funding source. We are looking for money to do additional shade structures, but it has to be the source. The seal coating, it is, there is a potential funding source available for that in some local transportation funds, which you couldn't use for shading. So, basically, we get funding based upon what's available and what it is we need. The benches, the monies, that's being paid for the cost of manufacturing the benches. That's a break even project.
Really?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Okay.
And then the trees...
That wasn't explained.
And then the trees, um, we were gonna look at that as maintenance money for the park, but, you know, if we have a little leftover and we need it, then we can...
The trees are donated, right?
The, the trees are donated, yes.
So, the money is...
Used to...
On the cost side is...
The placards, the dedications, and if there's any left, we will certainly find a way to use that, yeah.
I have one quickie question.
Yes.
On the shade, I'm just asking real quick, and if I remember right, it looked at it, the committee that, that was part of the playground structural, they looked at the shade, correct, if I remember right?
Yes.
And they went with more, either way, that was, that was, that was something that was looked at, and that committee's...
They preferred to have more play, um...
The question, structures, right.
And not put it into shade, and they have yet to be able to engineer any kind of a shade structure that can go tall enough on those climbing structures. They are very tall.
Yes.
Engineers have not yet found a way to shade them with shade structures that would be safe for the public, so.
Why wasn't changing one of the original structures, though?
That might explain, my, my, um, every Friday, my wife, Venus, it's my granddaughter, and they go to a number of different parks, go out, outgrowth. And I said, how many of them have shade structures over the playground park? She said, none. And I said, what? And I said, I gotta come down and see for that for myself, but apparently, most playground structures in my little anecdote, example, they, they don't have shade, but they're mostly, they're not metal. They're mostly, they're plastics and wood.
Plastic gets just as hot. When the temperature goes up, plastic is unplayable.
Right, now, that's just not common...
No, it does.
To have...
Look at Murphy's. They found it out. They had to put a shade over their play area. They found it out quickly.
How'd they engineer that?
I, I, you'll have to ask the Murphy's Park or whatever board it is, but they quickly had to shade it after the first year when they realized it was unusable during the summer. And plastic does get hot when the temperature goes up. Not as quick as metal, but it does get hot. Plastic doesn't, and it's unplayable. And parents, ask the parents, ask the kids, why didn't somebody put kids on the committee? And now I'm getting...
We had after.
We had two, we had two high school students.
We placed our high school students, they don't use it.
Well...
That's, I'm sorry.
All right.
It's not really, oh, boy, I wish...
I would like to mention...
And my surgery got in my way.
I would like to mention that maybe we look at just the swing set of, and that might be something we do after we're done with Boyer, and we can come in and maybe have our own public works put something in, because that would cost us a lot more if we didn't...
Okay. Thanks, though. Appreciate it. See you next week.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Okay. So, we're gonna move on to the next item on our agenda, and it's Resolution 2502, Bruce's General Plan Amendment and Ordinance 542 rezoning. This will also be a public hearing approving Resolution 2502, a general plan amendment from business attraction and expansion to single-family residential and ancestral parcel 057-023-023 and 057-023-024 totaling 4.88 acres plus or minus, and first reading in Ordinance 542 rezoning from business attraction and expansion to a single-family residential, and schedule the second meeting for February 18th. Amy? Scotty, for?
Mayor and council members, you're being given some options here. Basically, the applicant, this is a parcel that is out, Murphy's Grade Road, that originally was proposed to be for the roof screen project, which was approved by the city, and the applicant felt that the grade costs were gonna be too excessive, so they actually ended up in San Andreas. Before that, it was a 36-unit apartment complex was proposed there. So, the applicant now like to sell it, and most people have been inquiring about the parcel as a residential parcel. So, there are two options for residential. The actual application is to go to single-family residential, which could allow up to 29 individual homes out there, or residential estate, one acre minimum, which would allow for up to four out there, plus accessory dwelling units for either option. The planning commission recommended to go R1. The reason they gave was they wanted to have the maximum potential for the applicant for housing. They felt we needed housing. I'll also tell you that we have yet to, on a parcel in Angels Camp, realize the maximum density allowable under a zoning district. Our topography is such that you simply cannot get that kind of density in that you usually see allowed in zoning districts. So, while mathematically you could get 29, yeah, you're probably not going to get 29, even if you wanted to get 29. So, there's that. And I believe the applicant is online, and he's basically indicating that as long as it allow for residential, he can live with it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions prior to opening the public hearing?
No, I'm going to leave.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Amy. And we're now gonna open the public hearing. Is there any public, either present or online, who has a question or would like to make a comment?
Ryan Bruce, would you like to comment?
Uh, no, I don't have any comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Hearing no other public, either here, present or online, we will close the public hearing and return to council. Scott?
Yeah, I have a question. Is there a cost to doing this, to change the committee's general plan?
Yes.
And is the cost being borne by the city or by the applicant?
Advocate.
Thank you.
Caroline?
No comment.
Amy, this wasn't the piece of, the property that the county office sold to Columbia College, is it?
Yeah. Columbia College still owns their own properties on the other side of the drain.
Other side of, okay.
And we recently met with them on some other matters, and they are still aware of their parcel, and we're encouraging them to do something with it.
Mm-hmm.
Use it or lose it.
Isabel?
Got any comments?
No comment.
Alvin? Hearing none? That's the council's pleasure. Is there a motion? Amy gave us some options. Which option should we entertain?
I will make a motion to go with option A that the planning commission also wanted.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Rose?
Bee Hill?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye.
Shamenti?
Aye.
Malkada?
Aye.
Brolio?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Okay. Moving on to approving Resolution Number 2504, modifying Chapter 9, Section B2, serial meetings, and Resolution Number 2505, adding Chapter 5, Section C2E, mayor letter of support and authorizing updates to the city official handbook. Steve?
All right, thank you, mayor and council members. Before you tonight is a request to approve two separate resolutions, both modifying the adopted City Officials Handbook. Just for a little bit of history, back in April of 2024, the city council initiated an effort to update the then-existing City Officials Handbook. We went through a rather lengthy process of back and forth input from all parties involved, including the city attorney's office, until December 3rd, when the city council adopted the newly updated City Officials Handbook. Since that time, one section has been identified, thank you, Councilor Beal, that needs to be updated. That section currently reads as though, and it talks about serial meetings. Serial meetings means that council members are not permitted to discuss issues that they are going to be asked on outside of a public setting. And the same for staff. I can't call one council member and then another council member and then so on and say, hey, I think they're gonna vote this way, what do you think? That it's illegal, it's a violation of the Brown Act. So, the way the handbook was written, it stated that a council member cannot contact more than two other council members, when in reality, they, a council member cannot contact more than one council member. So, this makes that change. It reduces the number of council members an individual council member can contact from two down to one. The second resolution deals with an issue, again, I've been here about seven months, and this is the second time it has occurred. It doesn't happen often, but it does happen, where there is some local issue where a member of the public either contacts the mayor directly or contacts city staff and says, says, hey, can I get the mayor's endorsement? Can I get the mayor's signature on this document? The current city council, uh, City Officials Handbook does not allow for that. So, what this modification would do would be, in rare circumstances wherein it listed out here very specifically, if it is a local issue within the county, there's no fiscal obligation to the city, the letter does not commit the city to any future obligation, the mayor is not aware of any opposition by any council member, the mayor has determined in their sole discretion that the subject matter of the letter is not controversial, there is urgency, which requires the letter to be sent prior to the regularly scheduled city council meeting, and seven, the letter is shared with all council members at the next meeting. So, the two instances where this came up was a, a local resident achieved the rank of Eagle Scout, and there was going to be a public recognition of this Eagle Scout. And the mother said, hey, can the mayor give a letter saying, you know, congratulations, you did a good job, and this event is going to happen next week? Well, the next council meeting wasn't until two weeks from now. So, we were faced with the, with the, with the problem, do we just not get support for the mayor, or do we, you know? So, this solves that. The second issue was, oh, I think it was Habitat, it was on the agenda later for tonight, where Habitat for Humanity wanted to apply for a grant, and they wanted to get the mayor's endorsement for their effort to apply for a grant. Doesn't obligate the city to anything, there's no city funds, but again, they had a short deadline. It was within like a couple of days, they needed this letter from the mayor, and it wasn't possible for it to occur before the next council meeting unless we called a special council meeting, just for the purpose of giving the mayor the authority to sign this letter. So, this would give the mayor that authority to sign letters for local issues where, again, not aware that there's any, it's not a contentious issue, it doesn't obligate the city to any money, it doesn't obligate the city to any, any further action down the road. And those are the two, those, that, that is a summary of the two resolutions that are being proposed tonight. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any council members have any questions? Scott?
No.
Caroline? Isabel?
No.
Alvin? Thank you. I, you know, all my life, I always viewed myself as a rural follower, and when Morgan emailed me with that short deadline, I, I, I immediately contacted, I think, Steve and then Rose, and it was brought to my attention, her handbook wouldn't allow that. And then I was caught between a rock and a hard spot, and I told Morgan that, you know, I, I, more than likely, we're gonna move forward and we're gonna sign this, but please but please, in the future, be cognizant of the fact that we have a deadline. Because unless something changes, I just don't feel comfortable doing that. If we have a handbook, and therefore, we should follow the handbook. And I think Morgan understood. And I appreciate Steve you bringing this forward to kind of clarify that. By no means do I want to be placed in any situation that puts the rest of the council in a compromising situation. And I think this clarification, and I'm sure Will has checked it, will allow us, if the need arises, to be able to move forward following these guidelines. Second, my second comment is, Rose, in the future, unless the council does it, I don't think we need the whole handbook as an agenda item. I think the page that we're gonna update with striped throughs and maybe suggestive language would be helpful. Because when I open my pack and I see 300 pages, I went, holy meters, 300 pages. So if the council is okay with that, and we've seen the handbook previously, maybe just including that page that we're gonna change as a suggestion.
And that was my, I included the whole handbook.
I know, it's not, no, I know. I mean, but I don't, yeah. I mean, I'm not sure if that was past practice or precedent, but in my mind, it's something that we've seen and chewed on for a while. Just include the page that we need to change. If I'm hearing no other comments, any comments from the public? Any comments online? No comments online? Is there a motion?
Unmovably approved the council.
Both resolutions.
Both resolutions to amend the handbook as proposed.
One second. Bee-hum.
Aye.
Chirato.
Aye.
Chemente.
Monkada.
Aye.
Brulio.
Aye.
Thank you.
Approving an employment between the City of Angels.
No.
Which one now?
F.
See, mine is not, I'm gonna.
You just see his mind?
Yeah, I think so.
You need to format it right.
Approved Resolution Number 2506, accepting the Calaveras Council of Governments Electric Vehicle Charging Infrastructure Implementation Plan. Steve Williams will give a report.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Council members, before you tonight is a request to approve Resolution 25006, which accepts the draft Calaveras COG, that's Council of Governments Electric Vehicle Charging Infrastructure Implementation Plan. Calaveras COG engaged in this effort some time ago. They hired an independent consultant that considered the laws that are currently on the books that require certain government vehicles to transition to all-electric at some point in the future. And it's spaced out by years and by type of vehicle and by gross weight. So this consultant went throughout the county and identified charging locations that would be most appropriate to fit the needs of the local government, whether it's the City of Angels or Calaveras County. Those are the two agencies that this consultant provided this work for. It occurred over many, many months. There were many meetings. I participated in some of them. The result is now the draft report from the consultant, which if you're on the COG Committee, I think tomorrow it's gonna be on the COG agenda. And that consultant is gonna be there and available to go into much more detail about the report. So what's before you tonight is a request to accept the draft report with the understanding that the COG Board is going to get the full presentation tomorrow. And then I believe it's on February 20th, where the COG Board would then adopt the final version of the plan. So what this does is it puts it in front of you today. We then have another council meeting on February 18th, where if you want to recommend some changes or some input to COG as a city council separate from your representatives that go to their board meetings, you would have that opportunity on February 18th formally or anytime in between now and then to give me input to then give to COG for inclusion in their final draft.
So my only, I'll start off. My only question is, if we approve this resolution, does that, does that commit us to any financial obligation or implementation of the plan?
It does not. All this resolution does is acknowledges the fact that we have received the draft report and you're going to consider it. It doesn't obligate us to anything. It just accepts the report as a draft version with the understanding that it's going to go to the COG Board on, I think it's February 20th.
It's March 5th.
March 5th.
So we'll have two council meetings to input it.
So it does not obligate the city to anything. It just accepts the report. It's the formal document that says, yes, we have received this draft report.
Scott?
Yeah, I guess we're talking about the report and not what it says.
Because tomorrow, you and I get to the end tomorrow.
Because I started reading, I was saying, oh, I can see it now. One of the P S P S has come in. Our power's down for four, five, six, seven days. Oh, it can't be possibly an emergency. I will need our vehicles. And I'm just, and the cost and the whole bit. But I got it in my head. All we're doing is acknowledging receipt of a report. We're acknowledging receipt of a traffic ticket. We can still go to court. So with that said, I guess, I'll acknowledge receipt of the draft report.
Caroline?
I am, yeah. And because we'll be going to COG tomorrow, and I have in my COG report the same report, and I have a ton of questions. And so we'll be starting there and then getting your input and going back.
Isabel?
No questions. I just look forward to hearing your report after.
No question.
You know, one of my concerns, and I share Scott's concern, when I started to read this, I didn't read page by page. I started to glance through it. I thought about our police force, that we now allow our officers to take their vehicles home, you know?
That's one of the questions I have. We'll talk about that. We're just accepting the draft.
Okay, I do want to share, though. I get an Ag Alert newspaper, and I don't know if some of you heard or read that California has dropped the ban on clean fleets on diesel trucks for four years.
I have that note, too.
Yeah, okay. So, well, I'm not going to your COG meeting.
I know, but we're gonna get your input at the next council meeting.
Is that right?
Yeah. So we, yes. We're gonna go tomorrow, get the full presentation, and then we have our initial stuff, and then we get your input at the next council meeting.
For the March meeting.
For the March meeting.
Holy, okay, I have to be patient.
But bring your article next time.
Seventy-two-year-old patient.
Take a picture of it and send it to me.
Here.
I'll bring it tomorrow.
So, is there any public comment? Jill? Anyone online on this item? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2506.
To accept.
One second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Rose?
Bee-hum. Chirato.
Aye.
Chemente, Bee-hum.
Well, since I have to sign the ticket, I'll say aye.
Chirato.
Aye.
Chemente.
Aye.
Monkada.
Aye.
Brulio.
Aye, but that doesn't assume you're guilty, though. Just accept the ticket.
I'm not a bit guilty.
Not a bit guilty.
Press hard, three copies.
Interesting. Approving an employment between the City of Angels and Pamela Coronigan for the position of City Administrator. Steve?
Okay, thank you, Mayor and council members. Before you tonight is a request to approve an employment agreement between the City of Angels and Pamela Coronigan for the position of City Administrator. I've been your interim City Administrator since July of 2024 and as a retired pers annuitant. In order for me to be here, we have to be actively recruiting for my permanent replacement. And we have, in fact, been actively recruiting since July 3rd of 2024. Between July 3rd and about October, we received 13 applications for the position of City Administrator. After the initial screening of those 13 applications, eight applicants were invited to an interview process. That was in October. In November, we engaged in a three-panel interview process where six of the eight people that were invited showed up and were interviewed by, one was a community panel made up of five people, one was a professional panel made up of four people, and one was a department head panel made up of four people. Each panel had different questions specific to their discipline or their interest in who your next City Administrator would be. The top four scoring candidates from those three interviewed panels were then referred to the City Council for their own interview. Those interviews took place in December of 2024 and in January of 2025. During the January 7th closed session meeting, the City Council directed staff to give a contingent job offer to Pamela Coronigan. We've completed the background process. We've contacted references. And now we're at the point where we are ready to transition that contingent job offer into an employment agreement which you see before you today. I will tell you that I've been in fairly constant communication with Pamela since the contingent job offer was given. Both, not both, phone calls, emails, text messages regularly in communication with her, and she is very excited. She's ready to start. Her proposed start date is March 3rd. She is not here tonight because she is a current city clerk in another agency about two hours away, and tonight is their City Council meeting. And that's the only reason that she's not here tonight. But she is very excited. She's ready to go. March 3rd is her date, her start date of employment. And she's reviewed the agreement. We went back and forth with Legal on the agreement a couple times, a couple different versions of it. She requested some changes. Legal requested some changes. You have in your packet the agreement that she has signed, and she's comfortable with the agreement as it's written and included in your packet. And it's before you tonight for consideration.
Steve, I want to take this opportunity on behalf of the council to thank you for all that you've done for us. You could have just sat in that seat and warmed it, and we could have just maintained status quo. But you've really set the bar for us, and you've put us on a course that I truly appreciate, not only as a council member, but also as a citizen. And I am very grateful. You hit the ground running. You introduced yourself to multiple groups. You became immersed in our community. And words don't express the gratitude that I have for what you have done. And I know it's shared by our fellow council.
Thank you.
With that, are there any questions from council or comments? Scott?
No, I'm excited.
Caroline?
I echo the same sentiments. I'm excited.
Good. Isabel?
I look forward to welcoming Pamela from the City of Angels.
We're gonna have to ask.
I think she said Pam.
She said Pam.
Alvin?
I just echo what Mike said. I appreciate you a lot, and you've been wonderful to work with. And I actually like this new process of, we had business associations and stakeholders, and I thought this was a really good process, and I think it was needed. So I appreciate that all coming to the table, too, and I appreciate all of the work you've done. Thank you very much.
Comments from the community? Go ahead.
I'm gonna change my name to Public Comment.
Got those new knees, kid. You need to walk.
New knees, new hips.
That's it.
You know, I forgot, too. I also had cataract and laser surgery on both eyes, so it's bilateral. I'm having to. Steve, I do want to agree with them. And I also want to ask a question. Are you going to just, are you gonna be around to help?
Transition.
The trans, that's it.
Yes.
A transfer of government, kind of. Is it gonna be a smooth transfer?
The council is very concerned about me being available to make sure that the transition is smooth. I've committed to the council to be available as they see fit. I'm committed to making sure that my handoff of all the projects and the things and introductions to all of our partners and stakeholders goes as smoothly as possible. So I'm willing to stay for a little while, and I'd be happy to stay. I allow this community to stay until as long as it takes to make sure that I'm handing it off to Pamela and she can hit the ground running.
And you're a keeper. I'm sorry you're gone.
Oh, thank you.
The other thing, does she live in the city?
She will. She will.
Oh, so she does need to move?
Yes.
Okay. I just didn't know. I thought, that's a whole, by March 3rd, that's a whole project in itself. Okay, I wondered. I didn't know if she was here or.
She will be.
Okay, anyway, yeah, Steve. I'll miss you.
Thank you. Any public comment, Rose?
No.
Yes, sir. Sam?
Steve, I've sat back here and watched this guy upward. And I'm telling you, I have not seen a person like Steve in all my years, in all the public meetings I've seen, step into a job like this and then the job be done.
I agree. I agree. I agree. Thank you, Sam. Anyone else?
Should I get up and tell some stories about Steve?
Yes.
We need a rose here. Bringing the fact to council, is there a motion to approve the contract?
I'll make the motion.
There's been a motion. And a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Rose?
Bee-hum.
Aye.
Chirato.
Aye.
Chemente.
Aye.
Monkada.
Aye.
Brulio. Aye.
We're now on to monthly updates, the Administrator Report. Administration Report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and council members. If I could, please, before I go into the monthly update, as I said, I've been in constant contact with Pam, and she has prepared, since she couldn't be here tonight, she's prepared a statement that she's asked me to read on her behalf. Mayor, is this an appropriate time to do that?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So this is a letter written from Pamela. Says that. "Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for allowing me to serve the City of Angels Camp as your next City Administrator and for the faith and confidence that you have placed in me. This is a new journey that is much larger than I am. I am humbled, honored, and I'm looking forward to facing and traveling this new journey with many others to serve towards the city's continued growth in many ways possible, to uphold everything that makes our city special, unique, and dear to us all, and to uphold transparency, accountability, collaboration, trust, honesty, and service. To my dear son Gerald, I love you and thank you for being my constant cheerleader and critic and a source of joy, light, and laughs. To borrow from your own words, thank you for being quote, "real" and for keeping me quote, "real." To the mayor and the City Council, the city staff, the city partners and stakeholders, and to the many residents, volunteers, and the community. To my family, friends, mentors, and loved ones who have continued to encourage me. To all I have met along the way and have opened the doors that led me to where I am, starting tonight. And to those who have welcomed Gerald and me starting tonight, and to those who have welcomed Gerald and me as recent residents of the city and members of the community. To all of you, I cannot thank you enough for allowing me to join you in this journey. May the City of Angels Camp and all of us continue to prosper and be blessed. Good evening, and thank you very much."
Thank you for sharing.
So I can tell you that she has secured a place, a location here in town that she will be moving to, she already has the residents identified, and she's very much looking forward to it. So, with that, your monthly update for the month of February, the significant ongoing problems and the, uh, problems, the significant ongoing projects along with CIP projects, I will just briefly mention the three, I try every month to include, we as a staff, try to include between one to five just things, and you can see them, we're, on the right side is the first six months of the year, we're now moving on to the left side, which hopefully if this continues will be the second six months. So during the month of January, the new council was seated, that was a big thing for this community. We started, as you can see behind you, the third bedroom for the fire department in preparation to go to our increased fire department staffing of three people on every engine, and I think he's already left, but thanks to Chris O'Flan and his staff that went out, we were made aware of a potential issue on Bird's Way, which is near the intersection of Highway 49 or Main Street in Vallecito, it's just to the north of that, there was some potential sinkholes, and staff went out there, removed sections of the road, we had our city engineer there with us to see, get his own eyes on what was going on underneath. The fear was that we were gonna open up and find some leaking pipes and some who knows what under there. We didn't find anything, in our city engineer's opinion, that has any liability on the city. There was nothing that stuck out to him, and I'll make a formal presentation at the next council meeting about his findings, he actually wrote a report on his findings, but that was a pretty big deal, because I had heard during my time here about these issues on Bird's Way, so it was nice to get the staff to commit to going out there and actually seeing if there is a problem or not. So, that happened in January, you can see department by department what has, what the highlights were for the month. I want to thank Michelle and her staff, and Rose is involved also in the continuing effort of transitioning us to the ACU Fund, we're spending a lot of time on that, making sure that it's being configured appropriately so that we can start using that new system as soon as possible. Our building and code enforcement and fire officer is behind me, Michael, continues to do a great job, these are some of his stats, water and wastewater, planning department, engineering department, and then your police and fire department, the reports. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the monthly report. If not, I'll move on to my next item, which is the ACBA letter, so staff received a letter from ACBA that's in your packet, that's dated January 5th, thanking the staff for their partnership in the Christmas parade, and so since we received that letter, I wanted to make sure that you got a copy of it as well. And then finally, the monument sign ribbon cutting occurred this morning, Vice Mayor Sharato was there representing the city, and it was mostly county officials, Caltrans officials, Calaveras COG representative was there, and it was a very nice event, and Vice Mayor represented as well.
Can I ask a question about those?
Yes.
Those, I saw, I noticed them when they got put up in Angels. I like the old ones, but the old ones put... Give me a second. The old ones had the laudery and, you know, the, those, to pinpoint them as part of the city, and now, and I assume it's the county that dictated the style and the build, and to me, it's like, where did, those important things are now gone? They're not gonna be added, they can't be addressed some way?
Yeah. The county staff did leave the project, but they were in, I think it was either weekly or every other week communication with our staff, so our staff did have some input into those signs, but countywide, the idea was to make these signs somewhat unique to the community while still recognizing that they are all county signs.
They did do outreach with the various communities, and they had a vote, you could vote on this, gosh, it was probably about a year ago.
Maybe.
About a year ago, and that was, it was a big, big campaign, and they were looking for input for people from the signs.
Caltrans.
Caltrans was, yeah, so, and I noticed that Murphy still has their sign up that has all the logos on it, so maybe there's a way, but I know that the, that Caltrans has rules about how many entrance signs we have on the highways, and so maybe we should...
What's with that funny blue banner that isn't even home right? That says, "Visit Downtown Angels Camp", and it's not even home properly that stretched out or anything.
Can you, after the meeting, show me, or tell me where it is, and I'll look at it?
It's just past the car wash, coming this way though, on that side.
Okay.
And it's, it's a blue banner thing, it's just, you know, that plastic stuff and string, and it hangs. Yeah, and I don't know, yeah, that kinda looks, I don't know.
Okay, that's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to, also, my letter was in here too, Steve. Oh, that's on course, I'm sorry. Now we're moving on to council reports. Any, Mr. Beham, Scott?
Yeah, I'm looking forward, looking forward to my first COG meeting tomorrow night, and I'm looking forward to Caroline's, she looks loaded. Yeah, right. I'm looking forward to watching the show. And also, I will not be here in next council meeting on the 18th. A group of us from our neighborhood, they're going on a little golf junket down to Mexico for a week, so I'll miss next meeting. And that's it.
Steve, is Don William gone?
I don't know. I'm not sure.
He needs to do something like that.
Caroline?
Uh, let's see, I'll, we had our UWPA meeting last Tuesday, okay?
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday. I was voted in as chair of UWPA. Let's see, what did we go over? We had a FERT conduit exemption and license application process, we kinda talked about that a little bit. One of the key dates on that is that by March, April, we'll have the final application done. One of the things that we've had to do is a lot of studies, and so we've got the fish study, the foothill yellow-legged frog, the northwestern pond turtle study, and the preliminary water quality study, and so most of those have been finalized. The water quality takes a whole year of samples, so we're just, that one's gonna be outstanding. I am traveling to Washington DC, I leave on February 23rd, and I will be there twofold, I was already gonna be there for work, so it happened that Aqua Conference was happening at the same time. During the Aqua Conference, we have a consultant that helps get us in FaceTime with our legislative folks, so I will be meeting with Senator Schiff's office, Senator Pidiya's office, Congressman McClintock's office, the head of the US Forest Service, which was a big deal. We'll be meeting with Reclamation and maybe some other folks while in there, so that's all to get in support for the letters and things that we need on that, but there's also other reasons why we talk to them, sometimes we can get some mitigation, forest mitigation and things like that get on the list. And then we did a mid-year budget report, and it turns out that NCPA did a purchase of water from us, which was unexpected income, so that was good, and I think that was the high point, so anything else that I missed?
The other biggie is a clean audit, 100% good.
Oh, yeah, clean audit, yep.
Signed and stamped by Hawks.
And we actually had the auditor come, because he's located in Sonora.
Sonora, yeah, so, we had a clean audit, everything was happy, good there. I think that's about all I have in my notes.
Yeah.
Anything else to report, Caroline?
I will be out of town this Friday through Wednesday on vacation, so I won't be in the city, I'll be at Disneyland. So, only call me if the city's on fire.
Isabel? I attended the LAFCO meeting on Monday the 27th, and was re-elected as the chair, and Gary talked today as our vice chair. Let's see, we did a public hearing to review the municipal service review and sphere of influence regarding streetlight districts and public agencies providing street lighting in Calaveras County. We found that they should remain independently managed, and the districts are run by the city, excuse me, by the county, and then we adopted the MSR and the sphere of influence, and next year, we're gonna be looking at cemetery districts. Let's see, Gary presented on, in his report, he talked about the animal shelter, which that meeting would have already taken place, but just isn't at YI, something going on in the county, they were talking about the animal shelter and sort of the next steps there. Let's see, our special district members' terms, two of them are ending in May of 2025, so we will have two seats up for, I guess, appointment, should they not seek it, or if anyone else is interested, and we are looking for an executive director. At the time, the discussion is that, we've heard about this quite a bit, but John Benoit can't seem to quit us, so he apparently quit every other LAFCO that he had, and I don't remember how many.
Three or four.
It was like...
I probably ended the down over the past couple years.
Yeah, so we are the only one that he has stuck with. So, yeah, he's, he didn't really give a straight answer either, he just said indefinitely, but then he's talked about, yeah. We are also talking about scheduling a LAFCO one-on-one training for any new commissioners, and once I know that date, I will let everyone know, so if you want to attend, you can. And then there's some upcoming MSRs for the Veterans District, and John and the team are very excited about our new city administrator, so we can get back to the spheres of Influence for the City of Angels.
And the MSR.
And the MSR. And then the last thing that I will remind everyone, that we will remind you of there, is that the Form 700s are due April 1st.
Yeah.
So, just a heads up.
Are you gonna do the extra ones too?
Yeah, I'll do them.
Okay.
Just wait for the others.
That's my report.
And just to add, I got Isabel to smile, because I got to make my report, and I, I sometimes feel like I'm a cheerleader, and sometimes we don't sit and celebrate all the things that are good, and so I kinda shared that, I looked over at Isabel, and she was smiling. But if you haven't had an opportunity, and I talked with Steve about it, the MSR is an interesting read for the city, it's almost a roadmap for what we should be doing, and I look forward, at some point soon, they're gonna start that process in a sphere of influence, and it's, go ahead, Steve, if you want to add on to that or anything.
Oh, no.
Okay, okay, it just, it was an interesting read to see what they thought about, I don't know how many years ago, and how many things we've accomplished, but I think, again, any tool that we can use to better our community, I think that's a good thing. Alvin?
I got nothing. We did the UWPA, and that's Caroline hit on all of them.
Perfect. Okay, so, I had the pleasure, and I think some other, two ladies on my right and left, attended the DAC ACBA Social, that was on the 22nd, that was a wonderful activity, got to see the owner, president of Bank of Stockton in person, I thought that was pretty impressive.
Mary Elizabeth.
And Mary Elizabeth. And then on the 23rd, I attended a DAC meeting and talked about our city, and I thought that went well, there were some folks there that Debbie had invited to hear the presentation, and then on the 27th, we did LAFCO, and we all were at the Raints Workshop. I also want to thank the city, Mary Kelly came to a city council meeting months ago about the frog plaques, and if you walk along by a pickled porch, there are new plaques in the concrete, so I want to thank you and Public Works for doing that, Steve.
Yeah, I should have mentioned that.
It was in the report.
Public Works staff.
I read it.
It's in the report, yes, thank you for reading it. Dave Supervisor went out and identified the area, got the work done that needed to be done, I think it was three years' worth of plaques that needed to be updated, and they're all in there now, so thank you to the staff.
Thank you.
Correspondents, this is a letter that you signed for Habitat.
And calendar.
And the calendar, so January, February, and in red, I have that there's Abellino ribbon cutting on the 14th at 4:00 PM, RSVP is required by the 12th, so...
I already did.
Okay, perfect.
And then the UWPA meeting is going to be moved.
This one?
Yep.
Okay.
Because both Joel and I will be at the Aqua.
Okay. We just don't know a date yet?
We don't have a date.
I didn't think we said a date.
I don't think we set a date.
Okay.
I think he's gonna throw something out there.
And then, Rose, the CSEDD meeting?
Uh huh.
Will I be notified in advance? Am I on an email list, or?
They normally email you.
They normally email me?
I'll see if I can get you information.
Yeah, Dave's pretty good.
Okay, and is it, do I attend virtually or in person?
Either or.
Either or. Eor, thanks.
It's in Sonora.
Okay, it's in Sonora.
At the Job Care.
Oh, off the highway?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, as you're climbing up there.
Right, right, by the, Safeway.
Yeah.
Safeway. Okay, thank you.
Got it.
And typically, they do meet then, correct?
Every quarter, and I think it's like 11, it's in the morning.
Okay, okay. Any other comments or questions about the calendar?
I know this is kinda far out, but I will not be in attendance at the March 4th meeting.
March 4th?
Yeah.
Disneyland too?
Yeah, I'll work.
Future agenda items, I'll start with Scott. Any thoughts for future agenda items?
I don't want to see the road maintenance plan kick down, you know, the can kick down roads, so let's, let's get on that.
And maybe Caroline can, she requested a Caltrans update, maybe we can...
Yeah, I also asked about Caltrans permitting for downtown Angels Camp and the Christmas vows. What's going on there?
Okay, so staff is, I think we're gonna wait until staff, so we don't bring and go to electric for a special trip.
Okay. Anyway, I had that as a future agenda item, and then I have the Firewise Neighborhood slash city, or like communities, and so there's this whole movement of Firewise, and it'll drop down your insurance possibly for homeowners, and so I had asked Steve to see if Mike, Mike, right, Mike?
Michael.
Michael, if Michael could bring that to us as a presentation, because he's getting all up on that.
Did you have anything else, Scott, that you?
No, I'm...
The fire?
I don't need comment on Firewise, but I...
No, 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 but any other, okay, so you, you want road maintenance and just an update on the condition of our roads and other plan? Okay. Anything else, Caroline?
That's it.
Isabel?
I'm good.
I'm holding off till we get Pam in here.
Well, I'm thinking so too. I'm thinking so too. You know, and at some point, when Pam gets on board, maybe we can have Dennis Tickman come and talk about the community choice aggregation too, if we're interested in exploring that thing with PG&E, but I think we can wait. And then at some point, when Pam comes on board, we can talk with her, I think we need to maybe do a study session on goal setting for this year for the council, and what we'd like to see accomplished. With that, if there are not any other comments, Steve?
Do have, yeah. On my list for future agenda items that I've brought with me is, on February 18th, I plan to bring the engineers' report for Bird's Way for your review, also, our city engineer, Aaron Bruce Tatori, I've asked him to create for us an estimate of his fees to take on certain projects, like the Pickled Porch parking lot, the NAPA, the old NAPA building parking lot, and I can't remember, but there were five projects in total, and he's now provided us with an estimate of what it would take for him to create some plans, conceptual plans on what it would take to get those projects moving. He will be here on February 18th, and we will collectively present that report to you. We also have the PG&E agreement that may come on February 18th. I have road maintenance, I looked at that report again today, I think it was done in 2019, and it's quite a lengthy report, so I will bring that to you on February 18th. And then I also have Firewise, I did speak with Michael Clark, and I've also spoken with our fire chief, our fire chief is more familiar with that program, he's aware of Abbott's past fire department, I believe has a neighborhood that has that program in place, so he's going to talk with that fire chief, along with John Parks from Altaville Malonas Fire Department, and I've asked the chief to present a presentation for the Firewise program at some point in the future. It won't be February 18th, but he's gathering information to be able to present a report to you, thank you.
So I have a follow-up question for Steve or Michelle, is the money that have, we allocate X number of dollars for our engineer, correct?
Correct.
And have we, the one, the proposals that they're gonna come forth with that, is that gonna be in addition to the dollars allocated, or just, oh, we'll switch his workload to another project?
We already have task orders set aside that total what we've budgeted for Dewberry's time, and that includes Aaron Bruce Tatori's time, so this would be in addition to if it's not one of the specified task orders already.
And these would be in addition to this?
Correct, right, most likely for next year's budget, as soon as we prepare that.
And we do have mid-year budget coming on the 18th?
We do.
February 18th.
Wow, February 18th is gonna be a big...
Say we're gonna have that dinner here.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay, so we have future agenda items, if nothing, council, anyone else want to add anything? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second.
There's been a motion in a second? I just want to stop and thank before we close, I know this has been a long meeting, and, but I think it was a very productive meeting, so I appreciate everyone here presenting and providing input, and taking the opportunity to listen to our citizens, I think that's a, it's a thing that we take very seriously, and I just appreciated the attention that we paid, and, and again, it went long, and some of our meetings are gonna go long, especially when I talk, but the reality is, I don't think, we shouldn't take what we do lightly, and I know we don't take what we do lightly, and again, I appreciate everything that you folks do and contribute. So with that, there's been a motion in a second?
Beham. Sharato.
Aye.
Shemante.
Aye.
Moncada.
Aye.
Romeo.
Next.
Here, it makes me really...